Um, no attendance? All right, please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, first, first item on the agenda tonight is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
It's removed.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Me, opposed.
Oh, one name.
Just have a couple of things on the consent agenda that I'd like to...
Well, I guess I just, yeah, I just, um, I didn't call for discussion, I suppose, or should we, should we have had somebody, had you pull it out first?
Yeah, that would have been routine as for board member to ask that an item be pulled out if there are any questions about consent agenda. So we can surely address any questions?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we've already voted, but sure, what, yeah, what, what questions did you have, Shelley?
Um, so on the minutes, I just wanted to get some clarification, just because I've been asked several questions about the minutes. And, um, the audience with visitors, it says public comment was taken, and I'm looking on November 13th at 7:00 PM at our regular board meeting minutes. And I'm just wondering, um, when people are not able to come to meetings here in person, what is the standard way of them knowing that there were audience with visitors here and what they said and the responses and things like that? Do they need to watch the video?
Well, we surely have the benefit of having the video, that anybody can watch it by accessing it online. Uh, and, and remember, the, uh, the minutes are designed to really record, uh, record action to be taken, record board actions specific to the meeting. Uh, it's not a verbatim record of the meeting, really, that's why we have the video. Uh, and so, in this case, public comment being taken, uh, really referred to just that, public comment was, was taken. And so if there are people who would like to submit information or written information similar to some of the correspondence the board received today, uh, that information is sent directly to the board and will be cited in the meeting.
Okay, I just want a clarification from you in public, so people knew, um, that direction. So that, um, answers my question. So, thank you.
And, and just, just to clarify, that's, that's not my interpretation. That, that's, that's the way that minutes are designed to be taken and, and shared with others.
Right.
So I, I want to be real clear that that's, that's, that's not me.
Exactly, and I wanted to make that clear in public, in that way, if there were any more questions, they could refer to, um, this video and listen to you explain it, and then they can go forward, um, their, you know, that might answer their minutes questions. Um, the, the, um, uh, the second consent was the approved resignation of Harold Butch Stetson, CTE Mechanical Technology Teacher at Silverton High School. I'm shocked by this. He is a revered teacher in this community. Um, and to have resigned in the middle of the year, um, leaving his students, I, I just have a very difficult time digesting that. Um, that's a big red flag for me. Um, and I just, I, I like, I know that we, I don't know if we can talk about this in public as far as personnel resignations.
Uh, not, no, not, not really.
Okay. So, I just want to make it clear that, um, that's, that's a real, that's a big loss to our district, really big loss. Um, and it, it, it gives me thought to, um, how many teachers that we've had leave our district in the last two years? And this was the, the icing on the cake for me. Um, and I am starting to think that maybe we need to talk about exit interviews, um, for people who are leaving our district, um, and having that done by an outside, um, group of some kind. I'm not familiar with it, but, um, we have lost excellent teachers, and we have excellent teachers now, but it's just a big number for me, and it's a great, big red flag. So I, I wanted to break it up, um, with my board, uh, member group, um, and see if they had anything to discuss or if you had anything to contribute to that.
That might, that might be something to add for another time, Shelley, I think, but I don't know, I don't know if now's, now's really the time.
Okay.
Can I do one thing?
Yeah, to kind of, yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Just, not to open up a big discussion about this, because I, I agree with Tom, I don't think it's the time, but your reference that we've had an abnormal amount of teachers leave the last couple of years is not true. We, we, um, Mrs. Stevens talked about this last spring, I think.
Mm-hmm, it's right here, in August.
And, um, we didn't have, it's, it's been a normal amount. It hasn't been, we had some administration changes and things like that, which probably made it seem a little more like, like there was some upheaval, but there really wasn't. We didn't have any more, there hasn't been any more teachers leaving than normal, so I remember that from the last, from her talk.
Okay.
Just to clarify that, for the record.
Okay, well, I'd like to, um, if possible, I'd like to get more history on teachers and staff leaving then, because the only history that I really have, um, is from August 14th, 2017, um, when Dandy did present her, uh, her document about the employees. Um, so it would be, maybe it would be fruitful to have some more history of turnover in our district, or not turnover, just what the history is in the data. Um, just to...
Shelley, I'll need some clarification about that, because I, I believe Dandy shared quite a bit of data in, in the report in the middle of August, and so, if I'm understanding you correctly, you want more data than, than that, and if the majority of the board is interested in it, by, by all means, we can surely put this together, and if that's what you're asking. I, uh, again, I, I think Dandy gave a great, uh, historical perspective and snapshot of what had occurred. Uh, we, we do get the occasional mid-year resignation, you've read Mr. Stetson's resignation letter, uh, it's, uh...
I didn't read that, I don't have that.
Was that included?
That's not in there.
No, I apologize, so we'll get you the copy of that letter.
Oh, okay, oh, that would be great.
That's well, because I think that would explain.
Maybe that would help, okay. Oh, maybe that would help, then, yeah.
Yeah, I think, uh, he's, he's made it clear, it's, it's a very personal decision, and it's one that he, he, uh, takes very seriously, and he, he understands the significance of leaving in the middle of the year, uh, and I don't think that was, uh, his, his first choice as well, but, uh, in cases like this, it's, it's a very personal decision on his part.
So I'm just, I'm just looking at this, this that, that Dandy shared in August, and this only, um, gives, you know, it, as of August 14th. I don't know how far back this goes, this data. I don't know if it's just for the 16, 17 year, and, and the staff, you know, more, you know, if it was just for one year, then I would want more data previous to that, um, just to see, you know, if there's a pattern, or, you know, if every five years you have teachers that turn over and they, you know, you get a group that leaves and groups that come in, and it would just be nice to know that, just to see if, if there's a pattern being formed. So this is just for one year, so I guess I'm asking for a little bit previous to that too, so, just to see if there are any patterns.
I guess I'm a little shocked, why are we, why are you questioning people's personal decisions? I mean, do people want to leave for personal reasons?
No, I was just questioning, I was just questioning Mr. Stetson. It just, he's just been a revered teacher here, and to resign in the middle of the year, it, it really just, it just really shocked me. I, I just wanted to ask about that.
I get that, but there's no reason to question.
That's all. Yeah, there is, yeah, I was just asking. That's all.
Okay, well, kind of, yeah.
I have to write to you.
A little bit of a detour there, but yeah, if, maybe we can...
Yeah.
Talk more about Danny, if maybe Danny can get some more information, we can review that and see if anybody else has any more questions. But to do, to go somewhere with, like, exit interviews, that would take some board...
Yeah.
Approval, and that would take, that's pretty serious.
Sure would, yeah, okay, thank you.
...a verification of movement due to the second amendment.
Um, yeah, who moved?
I moved, and I think Tim's...
Okay, did that discussion change anybody's vote?
No.
No? Okay, very good, okay. Okay, moving on, number four, um, audience with visitors, um, would anybody like to discuss this? Okay, I'll read the statement. Welcome to the regular, uh, regular business meeting of the Silver Falls School Board. We are glad you are here and welcome you to address the board at this time. Please be certain to sign in before you present. In order to ensure equity amongst, amongst speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend, extend the time to remarks to five minutes. And a second audience with visitors will occur later in the agenda, and that will be specific to discussion and action items of this meeting. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, we'll need copies for the official record, if we could have a few copies for administration, that'd be great.
It's my stock.
Okay, can I just state your name and sign in, please?
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Nebs.
Okay.
And I live at 408 Lone Oaks Loop, Silverton, Oregon. And I would like to talk to you about what it means to be an ally. Um, in my job, if I were wearing my, uh, my badge, I would have a badge buddy with a rainbow on it that would say "ally," and that would identify me as someone safe to, um, staff and patients alike, if anyone had a concern or was having a issue that was an LBT-GTQ issue, sorry, I should have brought water. Um, this issue came up because, as you know, several weeks ago, there was a petition that was circulated at the high school, and that petition asked for the GSA club to be closed, shut down. So the petition circulated for several days and gathered over a hundred signatures. Um, and then it was shut down. And then a very concise, well-worded email was sent out by the principal, and that was welcome. But it really got me thinking, what are we missing here, and what could have prevented those several days' worth of conversations, bullying, that happened? And what could we do? Well, in many schools, um, besides having the GSA, they have an ally training program for staff, teachers, interested, who are become, who are, uh, interested in identifying themselves as a support system. Um, this program would not only allow our LGBTQ kids to have safe spaces where they could be and know that there was someone that they could speak to, but it also sends a message to the school in general that everyone matters, everyone deserves a safe place. What you have in front of you is information taken out of the Youth Suicide Prevention Plan. So this prevention plan is not specific to one portion of the population, it's the Oregon Department of Health Youth Prevention Plan. What you have in front of you are some of the risk factors. If you look at those risk factors, bullying is on top. So even though that petition was shut down in three days, three days' worth of snide remarks, tearing down posters, um, and other forms of bullying does affect kids, and we know that. So, there are two, okay, okay. So what I want to, uh, focus on are the protective factors of training and becoming an ally. So when we look at mental health, we look at protective factors, we look at risk factors. Vulnerable populations carry more risk. Protective factors such as ally programs, the GSA in itself, can help create an atmosphere where kids feel like they matter, because at the end of the day, I would rather have kids feel like they matter than self-harm, substance use, or worse. So I'd like you to consider using an ally program, and the GSA teacher sponsor uses the information from this organization. They have an ally training program for interested teachers. I really think it's a good idea to have training available for all teachers. So that's what I'm asking for. Please consider using a protective factor such as an ally program.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, would anybody else like to address the board?
Yes. Okay. I'll write it. Um, it's a cover letter, one extra cover letter, and then if you can take one, pass it back, please.
Thank you.
There you signed in in the back. Dana Smith, 514 South Water Street. Uh, good evening, and thank you all for allowing me to speak. I'll be reading this letter into the record and request that it, along with all the support documents that I've shared, be incorporated into the minutes as my formal complaint and made available for public viewing on the district website. As you know, I contacted all board members and copied the superintendent from my personal email at 3:30 PM on November 13th regarding a lack of information readily available to the public that was to be discussed at the regular meeting that evening. Within 30 minutes, I received an email from Todd White, and you were all copied, in which he not only ignored my concerns, but attempted to impugn my character with a reference to my service on Silverton City Council and a link to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. On November 18th, an article entitled "Silver Falls Schools Policy Process Criticized" was published in the State, Statesman Journal. The following day, I published a link to that article, along with an excerpt from it, on a local Facebook page called Speak Out Silverton. As part of the support documentation, I've attached 22 pages of comments on this Facebook post in which Todd White immediately jumps in, and with the first comment, accused me of spreading ignorance, i.e. a simple link without personal comment, to an article in our local paper. He continues by sharing the link to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission website, referring to my ethics conviction and calling me a hypocrite. Others joined the virtual conversation, telling Todd White repeatedly that he was out of line in both tone and content. Nevertheless, he continued berating anyone on the forum who voiced a differing opinion and ignoring comments in which he was corrected. For 20 of those 22 pages, he willfully spread misinformation and falsehoods regarding my character and business dealings. It finally stopped when Christine Thomas made this comment. "Todd, your role as a board member is to listen to your constituents. It's not a battle of being right or wrong, and as a board member, you should not be attacking the public, even if you disagree. You have been chosen as a leader in our community, and as such, you need to behave more like a leader." Uh, she goes on for a little bit, and then finishes with, "I kindly suggest it's better for you to listen without judgment or reacting, but to rather ponder and reflect before speaking. As a former, former journalist, I could not say half of what you say without being called into question for libel. Since Todd White has suggested that his Facebook comments are taken out of context, I have included the entire thread as evidence that his behavior has not changed since this body unanimously voted to censure him for violating policy almost exactly one year ago." The final document I've attached in that package is a copy of that resolution that ends with this sentence. "If Director White cannot or does not take such corrective actions, the Silver Falls School Board asks that he resign from office. Tonight, I ask that you follow through on this promise and publicly ask for Todd White's resignation on or before your next regular board meeting. While I realize he cannot be forced, if he chooses to stay, he will continue to be a liability for this board and the entire Silver Falls School District." Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Okay.
Tom, is this something that we can talk about at a work session, about policy? Because don't we have an, uh, board member ethics policy?
Yeah, we do. I mean, I suppose it's something we can talk about next meeting.
I just don't, no...
First I've seen of this, so...
Okay, so I just don't know how it applies to this, and maybe that would be...
It'd be something to look into, I think, you know, so, we'll talk about that later, I suppose, Andy. So, okay, would anybody else like to address the board?
I signed in in the back. Um, let's see, I came, I spoke, my name is Anes. Um, I spoke in September about my street, and I know that you guys were working on it, and so I just wanted to, I know, when I talked in front of the board last time, a lot of you weren't aware, I mean, yeah, I remember a few of you going, huh? Like, what, what's going on in your street? And so, it's been a few months, and so I just kind of wanted to come before you guys and ask what is happening. Um, I know you guys are working on it, I know you guys were supposed to have a meeting in November, and I don't know if that got delayed, um, but it's been a long time, so I didn't know. And I want to know, if, if I need to ask, if I need to go to the city instead, I know I've tried to talk to Kyle, and he sends me back to you guys, um, but, me and my neighbors, we just need to know that there's something gonna happen soon. Or at least that there's a plan in place, because it seems like every email I get is like, we, we've talked to them, we're not sure yet, they're supposed to get back to us, they haven't got back to us, so.
I know...
We're talking about Grant Street, Western, Florida.
Yeah, yeah, about signing. I know Andy and Shelley had, helped write some letters and met with some folks, you guys have anything you can share?
Uh, yes, I mean, it's similar to the information I shared with you in my response, and that is, and that is that it's, it's in the lap of the county right now, because the portion of the Grant Street that you're referring to is regulated by Marion County.
Right.
Uh, and so they have assured us, uh, in the meeting we had about a month and a half ago or so, that they were going to do a review of the North Grant Street area, there was some conversation about everything from a crosswalk and what it takes for enforcement, uh, and that there's some ORS's, or state law, that, that they have to reference in order to add the signs to that area. Uh, and then the most recent correspondence we received, which was probably a week and a half, maybe two weeks ago, uh, said that they will set up a meeting with us as soon as possible, that they're completing a review, or have completed some onsite work, or completing a review, and will send an email or contact us to set up a meeting, and that's the last we've heard.
Because they said that in October for November, right? I mean, they were...
Correct, they, they thought they would have, uh, a, a response to us, an opportunity to meet by mid-November, and they have not met that deadline.
Okay. I mean, if, if you guys ever want to come and just park in my driveway and witness the kids that are walking inches from cars, weaving in and out, and it's just, it's getting, you know, when it's really dark in the morning, I mean, I watch my kids stand out there for the bus, and I have high school drivers, no sidewalks on either side, and a school entrance to my right and a school entrance to my left, and no sidewalks on either side. So it's not like I can send my kids across the street to walk on the street and wait for a bus. They're literally either in someone's yard, or they're in the gravel and in the road. And cars and buses, so imagine, no sidewalks, and there's a ditch. So you're either in somebody's yard, or you're in the ditch, or you're on the street, right? So kids are having to line the streets. And then you have a school bus, which is pretty wide, and high school drivers come in the other direction, every morning and every afternoon. And me and the neighbors stand out there, and we, we wince as we see these cars, and I, again, I said it, that you see hair go up as the school bus flies by, and I think it's just a matter of time, and the city keeps pushing this on. And I know my neighbor has been emailing and calling, he said when his son, he started when his son was a freshman, his son is now in his senior year, and we don't even have a sign-up, I mean, a speed bump. So I don't know if there's any more pressure we can put on the county to get something done on that street, but it's just, it's not if, it's just when. And more, uh, they're building more houses, and I know you guys probably drive around there sometimes, there's another house that went in, there's three more that it's lauded for houses, and more children are coming into the neighborhood, no sidewalks, and I know that might be, um, the citizens might have to put sidewalks in, and that's fine, but no speed bumps, no school signage, and two school entrances with high school drivers. It's just, to me, it's like, if something bad happens, who's liable? Is it us? Is it the county? Because I have come and talked, I've written, you know, many people, I'm not sure who else, who else to harass. I know Andy's probably bored of me harassing him, and Kyle's like, look, you can call me Kyle, don't call me Mr. Palmer anymore. Um, so I'm like, send me to the next person, I can be a real bugger, I just don't know who else to ask, so, anyways, we'll just see what the next step is, I guess, and I'll just keep emailing.
And Anes, I'll definitely follow up with the county, and I'd be happy to share the name of a county engineer we've been contacted and been working with.
That would be great.
It would not be out of reason for you to contact that person, not that I'm suggesting that that's the answer, uh, but I can assure you, Shelley and I had what I believe to be a, a pretty compelling, um, um, meeting with county staff, and city staff for that matter, but this is, this is a county issue, uh, and, uh, I believe they got the message loud and clear. I, I agree with you, it's a very concerning area, very concerning block, uh, and we can't just unilaterally go put signs or speed bumps out there as a school district, and we have to rely upon the county to help us out. I believe there's a concern there, and we need to do, to push it again, uh, so...
Yeah, I'll email you, I'll take that name.
I'll send that to you tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great.
It never hurts to have a citizen call the county, like I do.
Call the county.
Throw, throw out a commissioner's name, you know? Throw out a commissioner's name or something, too.
I will, oh, yeah. I will, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I was, I was just gonna ask you if she could, um, contact Julia, um, or Eddie or the other, yeah, and that way, and even maybe Tony could do that as well, so that might be helpful. Thank you.
Hey, Andy, was there, is there any thoughts with that, we're talking about adding, uh, overflow parking there, where that, where that house, where we just took that house down, would that help with any, just the general congestion in that area, coming and going? I can't see how, but I don't know if that, if you guys had any discussions about that.
Uh, I, I can't say with certainty, it may help with folks coming from the east on Western Avenue, depending upon how that entire overflow parking works out.
Right, and, yeah.
Uh, but that also has to be approved through a permit by Marion County.
Yes, okay, well, there you go. Thanks, okay.
Hi, Kirsten Lithwick, excuse me, 3802 Edison Road Northeast. Uh, I'd like to address the board about the proposed policy to the religion in schools agenda. I am a secular member of the community with a child in Silver Falls School District. Point blank, I see no reason to change the current policy. The current policy is clear in assuring that religions are not taught in our public schools, while still allowing for the factual and legitimate teaching about religion to students in the course of a history or geography lesson. It ensures for children who are not part of the majority of faith, that they are not alienated, and that their parents still have control over what and how religion is taught to their children. The new policy puts a very large chip in those assurances. The proposed language is incredibly vague, and it even seems to allow for the teaching of religion in public schools by deeming it appropriate for teachers to teach, quote, "about the, a study of the Bible and other sacred texts." Unlike the current policy, the language in there that attempts to speak to religious freedom is very weak, and in no way protects our students from being proselytized to by a teacher with a religious agenda. It opens a door for children to be ostracized, shunned, or punished if they do not follow the religious beliefs of their teacher. I also find the inaccurate language in this Christian-leaning proposed policy to be embarrassing. It states it is in keeping with, quote, "the American heritage and our Constitution." Perhaps the writers of this policy neglected to reference the First Amendment, which states the government shall make no establishment of religion. Or perhaps they skipped over acknowledging all the evidence that our founding fathers very clearly and very explicitly wanted the new nation they were establishing to be free from any state religion, and that all citizens would have the choice to worship or not worship the religion of their choice. Within only three minutes, I'll just give you one quick example. If you look at the 1797 Treaty of Tripoli, signed by John Adams, it states that the government of the United States of America is not in any sense founded on the Christian religion. This proposed policy is far from keeping with our American heritage or our Constitution. To be candid, I'm pretty angry right now. I'm angry rather than coming to a, rather than coming to a school board meeting to talk about the real... This proposed policy is far from keeping with our American heritage or our Constitution. To be candid, I'm pretty angry right now. I'm angry rather than coming to a, rather than coming to a school board meeting to talk about the real issues that this district faces. Everything from class sizes to budget constraints to bullying. Instead, you've created a problem that does not exist. I'm angry that the board is attempting to erode protections for my daughter, and through this proposed language, and in doing so, you're neglecting the opportunity to focus on approving our education system for our children. The current religion in schools' policy seems to be perfectly adequate, and I would ask that you keep it as-is and turn down the proposed policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Test, test. Test, test.
I think in spring I came in to talk with you about, what? Oh, Nassim Raka.
State your name for the record.
Nassim Raka, 325 Tilikum Drive. In spring I came in to talk with you about a concern I had about the high school not offering the trip to the college fair last year, eliminating it from the juniors' opportunities to learn about colleges, learn about the financial aid. And I just wanted to update you, maybe you don't know, but this year they made a concerted effort, and they did get buses going to that college fair, and I think it was very well-attended, and I just wanted to update you on that, and I was very pleased to see that happen.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Anybody else? Okay.
I'll sign in in the back, is that adequate?
Just state your name for the, no, you can.
My name's Chris Mayew, 585 Tilikum Drive. I'm here to talk about the proposed change in religion in the schools, and my main question is, why is there suggested change? Has there been a problem with the policy as it is? It strikes me that there is a place for teaching religion in schools, and that place is parochial school. I attended a parochial school myself, I graduated from London High School. That is the proper place to teach religion in school. Tax-supported schools are not the proper place. I think the existing policy is more clear, it's more inclusive for all students, and it's broader. And that's really all I have to say, I'll just close with, why is there a consideration of changing it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that many of your questions will be answered later tonight, in a few minutes, because we'll be having Peggy Holstead from OSBA, and we'll talk about how this process happens. So, anyway, but the next item on the agenda, oh, does anybody else want to address the board? Okay, good. Okay, so the next item is our student representatives, Brooke McLenox, Brooke, looks like Maggie Roth's, southern for Brooke, and Rachel Peters.
Brooke couldn't make it today, so Maggie Roth is filling in.
Okay, so our boys' basketball team is 2-0 right now, and they play tomorrow night at Marist, and they have a new coach, Jamie McCarty.
And our girls are 1-1, and they play at Marist home tomorrow night, and the varsity has had a very challenging schedule, and that it should really help them grow and learn their weaknesses and improve for the league season.
Our swimming team has had two meets so far, and they have a home meet this Thursday.
Our wrestling team hosted their first meet yesterday, and it went very well. Their next meet is at Liberty next Saturday.
Our choir had a concert last Thursday, and it was very successful, and they packed the auditorium.
And our dance team has competitions every weekend, and they're working hard and placing higher and higher every competition they perform in.
ASB just finished the Tree of Giving, where we raised over $6,000, and were able to buy gifts for over 50 kids. And we're now entering winter week, which has spirit dress-up days, and we're counting down the days till break.
Our key club has participated in several events this year. They helped gather food for the Saka Food Drive, and they put on their fundraiser called Trick or Treat for UNICEF, which raised money to buy vaccines for young mothers in developing countries. They will be helping Kiwanis with the Letters to Santa Project on Tuesday, the 12th, by writing letters back to students who wrote them to Santa. Several other key club members have helped with ASAP, After-School Tutoring Program at the middle school.
Our Interact Club has two students going to the hospital every Monday for a rotary lunch to talk and learn from members of the community.
Our Red Cross Club has been working with the Pillowcase Project to help kids learn how to react in case of an emergency.
We just created a new Spanish club, so this lets students practice their Spanish, and also Spanish for students that were juniors last year, they can continue to practice.
Our Gay Straight Alliance Club meets once a week after school, and they're planning fundraisers for the months to come.
National Honor Society is currently planning an induction ceremony, and is helping out by doing small community service projects around town.
Our Scan TV continues to motivate and cover all of the current events at the school. They also have been keeping our tech upgraded and the best it can be.
And our theater department just finished their show Bye Bye Birdie, which was a great success.
We're so thankful and appreciate all of our clubs and what they distribute and, like, yeah, what they give to our community.
Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait. No, I just wondered, does all the money you raise at the Tree of Giving go to buy gifts for the kids?
Yes.
That's awesome, over $6,000? I know your goal was five, right?
Yes.
Great. What kind of things did you do to raise money? I saw Drescher in a cage.
Yeah, Mrs. Drescher was in a cage, and.
Karaoke during lunch.
Yeah, we had macho volleyball, which raised a lot of money.
Cardboard boat races.
And, what else?
There was a lot.
Many fundraisers throughout lunch.
And how many periods did Mrs. Drescher have to stay in the cage? I never did.
I think all.
Was it all day?
All seven.
Oh, awesome, very cool. Good job. That's awesome you did this, good job.
Thanks. All day. Okay, next item on the agenda, our district policy review process, and I'd like to bring up Peggy Holstead. She's the Director of Policy Services with Oregon's School Boards Association, and they're the folks that.
Hi.
Help us build all the policy.
Well, I actually help facilitate the process of going through and reviewing your policies. Just a brief review of the process, it began a little over a year ago, and hopefully, we may finish up this week. If not, definitely next month, we'll be totally finished, going through all the sections. And I really want to commend the committee, it's a huge commitment to go through these processes and these policies, and they've done an excellent job. I want you to all know they have their homework done when they come, and as a result of which we have been able to get through the policies in a really timely fashion. It started off with a recommendation, I did get a call from your superintendent saying the board was interested in reviewing policies, and asking about the process for policy review, and then he invited me to the board work session so that I could go over the process, and that's exactly what I'm going to do with you this evening, on the process review. First of all, you asked the superintendent to establish a committee, it is the superintendent's committee, because the superintendent is who does the recommendation to the board of any policy revisions, whether it's in this revision process, or whether it's in any policy recommendation, it always comes from the superintendent. So in that case, the superintendent gets to set up the committee. It's totally up to the district, up to the superintendent, as far as who I get to work with. I really want to commend this board, the fact, and your superintendent, the fact that you do have board members involved. I have many districts that never involve a board member in a rewrite, and also, and that the fact that you do, and that your board members do come prepared. The superintendent also has included each of the directors of the divisions, so that the policies that they directly impact, those people have direct impact on any recommendations for revisions also. And again, to be commended, because I work with a lot of them, that it's just the soup, and I sit down, and, you know, they make the changes, and off we go, and it's presented to the board. So I do want to commend your superintendent for this process. The other thing that happens is what, is I take your policy manuals, I go through them, we go section by section, we don't like to take anything to the board until we've completed the section, which isn't that big of a deal till you get to Sections E, Sections I, and Sections J, they're huge. And the reason we want to wait to bring them to the board till the whole section's done, is many times as we review the policies in the section, we get to another policy and go, oh, well, if we're going to do that with this one, then maybe we need to rethink what we recommended in a previous one, and so that's why it may take several months to get like Section I or Section J, as far as to the board for first or second reading. The other thing is, is so approximately two weeks, and usually three, I send a set of policy recommendations to your committee, and they also cover policies as well as administrative regulations. I'd probably say about 90% of all recommendations come from state, federal laws, rules, or regulations, because that's what we're really looking for, is making sure the district's compliant. Many others are court cases, whether they're national Supreme Court cases, we are under the jurisdiction of the Ninth Circuit Court, so if there's a Ninth Circuit Court, and then obviously any of the Oregon courts, any of those cases can inform policy, as well as the Oregon Government Ethics Commission opinions and the Attorney General opinions. You will find all of our legal references literally hyperlinked at the bottom of all the policies, so that if any time you're concerned about language that's in there, you can click on those legal references, and they'll actually take you to the ORS, OAR. The federal statutes and rules and regulations and cases are not hyperlinked, because it depends on which link you go through, but all the information's there, and all you need to do is copy it, put it into Google, and it'll take you right to the information that supports that policy language. And then, all of our policy language is reviewed by our attorneys, and so, and sometimes they have some best practice recommendations, but again, that's probably unless one, less one or two percent, most of it is just making sure we're in compliance. We meet with the committee, and we discuss, our meetings are about two and a half hours each, and we go through policy, and AR, line item by line item, questions are asked, questions are answered, issues, concerns are discussed, and then we try to bring the committee to consensus on what language that they would like to use. I would probably say, I don't know, I look at my community members, or committee members, I'd say probably, again, 90, 95% is consensus. Every once in a while, we have one or two where I'll take some recommended language back, and have our attorneys look at it if it's not something that I'm familiar with. And then always, because it's a superintendent's committee, many times the committee will, you know, look at the superintendent and say, what's your recommendation, and have decided to go with that. So that's kind of the process within the, within the process. Then I go back and take all the edits back and clean them all up, and then they come back to you for first review, or first reading. One thing that I don't think a lot of boards understand, there is no legal requirement to do any first reading at all, the only legal requirement is for board adoption. OSBA really recommends that there be a first reading, so that not just board members, but others have an opportunity to at least know what's being discussed, and kind of an opportunity to give input. The process for input, since I've shared with you the front end, is if any board member has, or anybody has any questions or concerns about any language, that needs to go to the superintendent, because, and then he, because he's the one that recommends to the board, then he makes the decision whether it needs to go back to the committee, or that the recommendation stands, and that he recommends it back to the board. So, any comments or questions or concerns would always go back to the superintendent first, and then he decides whether it goes back to the committee for any kind of, you know, reconsideration, so. And bottom line, it always depends on what the board chooses to pass. They're your policies, and you get to choose the language that you want to use to pass your, your policies. Just wanted to make sure that I've touched on everything. As far as we're finishing up the project, when we finish going through all the sections, and you've adopted the policies and reviewed the ARs, you send those dates to us, we put them on all the policies, and when we're finished, we send you two sets of completed written policies, usually each set's two notebooks. I actually think we've probably deleted more policies than we've added, because there's a lot of things that are important, but they're not necessarily policy, they belong somewhere else, and we've had those discussions also on where those go. And then, you also will get a disc that will have them electronically, so that you will always be able to have a way to update and constantly update your policies. And I think the only other thing to really commend you is my understanding from working on your policies is that you do two readings before you even, you go to adoption, and that's extremely generous. I think the majority of districts do one. I have some districts where the superintendent simply asks for a single read and adoption at the same time. Superintendent always has that option, the board always gets the choice to say yea or nay. We caution superintendents from using that too often, because we really want the chance for policies to be reviewed. I think the concern of having too many readings prior to adoption is many of these policies are time-sensitive, and that until they're adopted, the other policies are still in place, and as I remembered, most, as I reminded you, most of the policy rewrites are based on legal changes at the state or the federal level, or legal changes as a result of case law, and if we have to wait three or four months, depending on how often you meet, you know, for those policies to be adopted, and anything comes up in the meantime, you would have to go with your older policy. So those are always the concerns and the timing of that. So I do want to commend that you have a committee, and that they've been very responsive, we've had phenomenal discussions. I don't want you to ever think this committee's been a rubber stamp in any way, shape, or form, sometimes that's why it takes us a little longer to get through some of the sections, we have really, really good discussions, very thoughtful discussions, and they certainly don't take recommendations at carte blanche at all. There's a lot of times I'm going back with recommendations to just make sure that whatever recommendations come through, you know, still pass our, our legal test, so that we don't want to put the district in any additional liability as a result of anything that's been recommended by the review committee. So that always goes back. So, again, you guys have done a phenomenal job, you should be finished in another month or two, and really commend the committee process, and the fact that I think you're extremely generous by doing two readings before you go to adoption. That's, that's really, I mean, that's excellent, that's excellent.
Okay, yeah, yeah, Peggy, thank you.
Okay.
What, we can change these policies any, at any time, correct?
Right.
So, so, I mean, because ever since I've been on the board, we're constantly going through a policy.
Well, one of the reasons is about every three months, you subscribe to policy update, and about every three months, you receive a policy update from us, as a result of changes in OARS, Oregon Administrative Rules, as changes in ORS's especially, oh, the last one, I'm surprised, well, actually, because you're doing a rewrite, you haven't had to do the changes. I look at your staff, we had, what, over 75 policies changed in the last policy update, and because you're working with us, we're making all those, you know, cutting and pasting changes, so that your support staff doesn't need to do that. I really was nervous walking into the board secretary's meeting at our convention when they looked at that last policy update. So about every three to four months, you're getting policy updates from us. We have a short legislative session this time around, so hopefully, we'll have a short policy update in the spring. Your next policy update will come out in January, but you're still under contract with us, so we'll be making the cutting and pasting for you, and at least taking that work away, but it doesn't take the discussions away in any way, shape, or form. So, yeah, you should be working about, you do two readings and then an adoption, you should be working on policy just about every meeting.
Right, but I guess, you know, policy's coming from two directions, from, from you guys, and you guys are working with the state, you understand how the laws are written and why the laws are written, and you're seeing.
Well, not always why, but.
Well, okay, anyway, no, I.
Because let me tell you, we write them a lot different than what sometimes they come through.
Sure, I get that, but, but you guys are starting off with your policies that you're handing down to us to start with, and review and approve or not approve or change. But then it also comes from the public.
True.
Or board members, or whoever says, we don't like this, or this is wrong. And so we can change it, and then, you know, if we don't like it, we can change it. These, once our policy review is done, they're not set in stone, they're not carved in stone forever, we can.
They're no different than any other policy that you, you approve at any point in time. The only thing we encourage you is, before you make any major changes, that you can, you at least consult with your legal counsel to make sure whatever changes. I never tell a district they can't do something, because you do have the right to adopt policy. I do try to share with you some maybe concerns, if you would choose to use certain language, you know, and what are some of the. you know, and what's, are some of the, you know, possibilities, but the board always gets to choose. And just because you adopt a policy doesn't mean that you can't go back and revise it, you know, through that process again. There's nothing ever etched in stone by this process in any way, shape, or form. This is just a one-time, you know, once-through, and to be honest, you've probably already updated a couple that you approved about a year ago, because they've changed as a result of the last legislative session. So there's times that you might change one policy three times in a year, because of the changes in O A Rs and/or O R Ss, or some federal court cases, we have quite a few coming down, and those can impact policy, too.
Okay.
So we usually get more problems to say, why can't you just leave them alone? And then I go, well, the laws keep changing, so those are the only way.
Yeah.
And everything I do is only a recommendation.
Right.
You don't have to do anything, we say.
Right, of course, yeah, no. And we always, Andy, whenever we recommend a change, we, we don't, I mean, I think as long as I've been here, you've always run it, run it by them first to make sure we're not getting in legal hot water.
Correct.
Yeah.
And there's nothing wrong. Like you say, we have quite a few attorneys, and so it's not just one person's opinion. I'm not an attorney, I'm an educator. My background is in education, and we look at that, but there's certainly nothing preventing you from wanting to ask your own legal counsel. We, we certainly don't have any concerns with that. We all just came back from the school law conference last week, and there's plenty of work for all of us to do.
[laughing]
We're not looking for a lot of work.
Yeah.
But, yeah, you can make those changes at any time.
Yeah. Well, I sure appreciate the work you guys do. I mean, that's a lot, that's.
We've enjoyed working with you.
That's weighty work.
It is, I love it. I absolutely love it. I guess I don't stay awake at night dreaming these up, I do stay awake at night making sure you guys can stay out of court. I'd much rather have the money go into the schools and in the classrooms than into attorney's coffers.
Right, right.
At least I did when I was a teacher and a principal, so.
Yep.
Anything else?
So I have a couple of questions.
You bet.
Just to clarify for our audience here and for people that are watching, in that way they can understand. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, did you say about 90% of the language that's used is legal language?
No, Ben, most of the, any recommendations that I make are usually based, the majority of them are based on changes in O R Ss, O A Rs.
Okay.
Federal laws, state laws, court cases, opinions, things like that, and then, and then the rest of them, it might be some best practices language, but a lot of that's bracketed language.
Great, okay, I just wanted to.
But we focus on the legal. Like I say, we don't have to dream this stuff up.
Right, exactly. So I wanted to just, I wanted to kind of make those mesh together, where you come in and do the legal side of it, and then we can also, as a district, incorporate language that works for our district.
Well, actually, through this process, I just make a recommendation, and your committee has been giving me your language. That's why we just don't take my language carte blanche.
Okay.
That's the whole point of the committee, is I simply make recommendations, and then it's the committee that decides what actually goes to Andy, that he brings to you.
Okay.
I don't make any of those decisions. Mine are only recommendations, and to say the majority of my recommendations are based legally, actually, I write notes at the top of the policies when they come out, and then you say, is this current practice? You know, because if it's not, then we need to change it. Are these the correct titles? Does this program still exist? So I actually probably write as many notes at the top to make sure that the district's input is there, and your policies, I mean, I can't change the laws, but there's quite a bit of customizing in that committee process. It's not just taking my input. The committee gives quite a bit of input on what's unique about, you know, Silver Falls School District.
Okay, I just, I'm really thankful for that explanation right there.
Yeah.
Because that really helps to clarify the difference between what you're doing as the policy director at OSBA, and you are recommending to our committee.
Mm-hmm.
And so that way people understand the difference.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm always asking, I get more input from the committee than they get from me.
Yeah, okay, okay, very good. Also, uh, time-sensitive, the, they're time-sensitive because the law, is there a time limit that you have to get that law put into there?
Sometimes there are, like some of the policies that came out in September.
Yeah.
We, some of them started with this school year, or some start January 1. The challenge we have is that the legislature doesn't go home until after, you know, July 1 or whatever.
Right.
It takes us many times, almost a month, a month and a half, to get through legal review, to wade through, because just because you have one law change, as you'll notice, you have four others that will say something very different.
Right.
And we've got to sit down with the attorneys, with also people that have sponsored the bill and looked through all the bills, our legislative team, to really come up with any recommended language. And so that comes out in our September update, and so it's always important, that I always say, get the requireds done first.
Yeah.
Because those are the ones, and then the highly recommendeds get done second, and if there's optional ones, put them on the back burner.
Right.
You know, unless, unless you have those and they're really important. Obviously, you get to choose which ones to do, but that's our recommendation for that. But, yeah, so if you're waiting three and four and five months before something that was passed in July that was due this year, isn't done until January, February. With compliance issues like special education.
Yeah.
Some of the federal programs, like the local wellness policies and all that, because we have, any recommended language that we put in that is part of required federal or state law, we have that agency or organization sign off on those policies that they are compliant, because we're not the regulatory authority. So like all the changes that went on in any child nutrition, that was all signed off by Heidi Dupree at O D E.
Okay.
All my, every Student Succeeds Act revisions were all signed off by O D E and the various departments, because again, they're the ones that are regulatory, we aren't, so they review all those. All the ones that are related to health services, Oregon Health Authority, Jamie Smith, he signs off on those, and Eli Sanders from O D E. So we don't work in isolation in any way, shape, or form with our recommendations. By the time you get our recommendations, they have been vetted by other agencies, organizations, other attorneys, other educators, you know, so it's not something that's just slapped together.
Okay.
So there's, there's a lot of research that goes into it.
Great, but thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it. I have one last question for you. Um, I have the Section I policies here.
Hate to tell, yeah.
I know, I've been going through them, I've got my tabs all over. According to, or, and answer me this, the public meeting laws that are, that we are supposed to do things in the public, if we have questions about these, are we by law supposed to pull them out in public and ask the questions and ask for the recommended changes, or, you know? I just, I want our audience to know that, yes.
The process. Because you're going through this rewrite, if you have comments or questions, let's say this is the first reading of I.
Right.
Those comments or questions would go directly to Andy.
In the public meeting?
No, no, because these are information. You could email him.
I can email him.
Yeah, email him and say, these are the comments, questions, and concerns I have on these policies, because what he can do is, he can get those answers or provide that clarification.
Right.
Because if it's specific to Silver Falls, I'm not going to have that information.
Right, exactly.
I mean, other than what the committee recommended, and if you have a program question, I'm not going to be able to answer that program piece, but he would be able to.
Right.
If it's a question that isn't directly related to program, he can shoot me a quick email and just say, Peggy, these, you know, these questions have come up as a result of our, you know, information or first reading, can you get back to me? And usually, if he hasn't heard from me in 24 hours, he's looking for me.
Okay.
And it's, and it, he will get something back, even if for some reason I'd be out of town, and I have other people that can probably answer his questions, too, so he doesn't always have to wait for me.
Great.
So what you would do is, that information would come back, and then he would get the information back to you and/or the rest of the board, whatever process, internal process that you have there. And then, and then the next time it comes back, you have a second reading without adoption, and, you know, again, if there's any comments or questions that haven't been answered, then you can ask. By the time you get to adoption, we recommend that all adoption go consent agenda, because you've, especially in your district, you've already had two readings, you know, so by the time you get to adoption, there, there shouldn't be any questions or anything. And that's the hard part, because you get into I and J, and they're really big, so it, it takes a while to get through them. And, and again, I think it's really hard with one, but the fact that your district has two is, it's a lot of work, but you only have to do it once to have the big chunk.
Right.
From now on, you'll just get little chunks.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying the, the public meeting law aspect of this, that we can email our superintendent or.
Oh, yeah, just asking for the, yeah. And it should all go through him, and then if he has comments or questions that he can't answer, he'll involve us in some way.
Right.
And then if it's something I can't answer, a lot of times, if it's regulatory, like O D E, I might, I'll get on the phone to them and say, I have a district that is having a question, can you, you know? But again, so much of it is from statute that I pretty much send Andy, this is where the language came from, you know, and this is why we use it, as far as that goes. And I do want to go back to, chuckle with Thomas, remember, we don't write these laws. I just have to come up with the policies.
Oh, yeah, no, I just.
And it's a real challenge. We would all write some of these laws very, very differently.
Oh, I'm sure, I, I don't think I'd want your job, but, you know.
Oh, and that's good, because I love my job.
I'm glad you do, because that's okay.
I know, most people just hate it, but I absolutely love it.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's 44 years of education. Yeah, I've worked in education and worked in policy and, and stuff, so I love it.
Well, I just wanted to clarify those for.
It's great.
Everybody, and that way, some of the questions that might be answered, or asked in the future about it, might have already been answered by you tonight, so.
Great, and if they have any others, don't hesitate to send them to Andy, and he can forward them on, or he probably will have the answer anyway, because we've been working on this for, like I say, pretty, pretty close to a year.
Right.
But you've done an excellent job. It's been an absolute delight to work with your committee and with the district. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Peggy, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay, next item. District Policy Committee Recommended Revisions, Deletions and Proposals, Section 1, Section 2, second reading, Section I, second reading. Anybody have any, any thoughts?
Which one is that? Section 1. Section 1.
Okay, I guess, I guess we're good. We'll move on, we'll move on to Item C. We got some discussion for this one. Policy I G A C, Teaching Religion in Schools, consideration of maintaining the current language. Yeah, we've been getting lots of input from, from folks, as, we've been getting letters, we've been getting public input. Personally, I tend to agree with them. I, I like the, I, I think the current language is fine. And, and I do, I think that the, the new language is, is kind of vague, so I, I tend to prefer the original. I don't know, does anybody else have any thoughts?
I prefer the original as well. I do as well, but I wanted to hear from Andy, you said that you, or you have talked to OSBA and said that the original policy does meet legal requirements, is that?
I have, correct. And, and let me clarify as well, that the, that the language, similar to what Peggy just shared, comes from a recommendation from Oregon School Boards Association, this is common language in a number of school districts, but I think what, what we've discovered here is that there was really quite a, I think, committed and thorough effort completed probably close to 20 years ago in this school district to help address this specific policy, and your process helped bring that to light, the fact that you're, you're reviewing that. So I, I think it's an important reminder to have, and this is one of those opportunities where you, as a school board, have the flexibility to be able to either maintain your current policy, if it meets the legal requirements, or, or make change, if you believe that it more appropriately meets the requirements of policy. In this case, based upon my specific comment to OSBA, is that your current language does meet the legal requirements specific to the policy. If you note even on the policy, your current policy and the new policy, the legal references are identical, and while the language is different, the, the language is specific, I, I agree with you, much more specific in your current policy, as compared to some policy that appears to, to bring on some, I think, some vague references and clearly some, some questions from community members.
Did they, in, in your discussion with OSBA, did they have any insight as to why they changed, why they made it the way they did, why they presented it? I didn't want to ask Peggy that, you know, we were, but, but did, do you recall any, any, any input they, they gave us?
She was not specific about this language in particular.
Okay.
What, what I will share with you, is based upon my research, is that the, the policy that you have, the existing policy, is Silver Falls School District specific policy.
Okay, okay.
I don't think you'll see that, this replicated language in any, in any other school district.
Oh, okay.
This is generated by you as a board.
Okay.
In 1997, I believe, with your legal counsel, OSBA at the time, to help address questions from community members at the time.
So the changes were just to standardize it with the other, other districts more or less?
Yeah, keep in mind that when OSBA gives us recommendations, they give us recommendations that are standardized. It's pretty common language that, that meets the legal litmus test of appropriateness, and , and OSBA will say this language does. I'm not a legal expert, I'm not an attorney, but I, I do know when there's questions and concerns raised about proposed policy, and clearly you've had plenty of feedback that the new language is not something that is, would be reasonable or acceptable in this school district. And since OSBA has shared that your current policy does meet the legal litmus test and definition as needed, then I think it's entirely appropriate for you to consider maintaining that in your, in your policy manual.
Did the, did the committee have any discussion about it?
It was, it was, I, I don't recall any, anything that would be out of the ordinary. Some, some of these, we spent a couple of minutes on, some we spent 10 minutes on, so I don't recall a lot of conversation about this policy in particular.
Yeah, okay. All right. Very good. Any more discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Administrator and Staff Reports. First up is Andy with some school district, the, the school district enrollment work group update.
Yes, we, I actually have a, want to remind the board that I have a work group that has been established to review a number of documents in the school district that will hopefully give us some, I think, better definition about where we anticipate enrollment in the school district to go. But we've all seen changes in the community, we've seen apartments constructed, we've seen new homes constructed, but we haven't seen the enrollment change a lot in this school district, especially over the last 10 or 15 years. So with that said, I've pulled together a committee, folks, a work group, three community members, Katie Gardner, Cindy Jones, Ralph Fisher, all, after I asked the board and community to share any interest with me about being on this work group, we received interest by those three individuals from our community. Jennifer Traeger, thank you very much, also for volunteering to be on that. I've asked two principals, Principal of March Wayne Elementary, Greg Cots, and Principal of Scotts Mill School, Kirsten Jorgensen, to also join the group. Steve Nielsen will be part of this committee as well, or this work group, and, and me. We'll meet once, possibly a couple of times. We'll review the Portland State University demographic study that you sanctioned last year as one of your, one of your board goals. We'll also review the history of enrollment in the school district, history of transfers dating back about eight or 10 years, maybe more, in the school district, and we'll also reference a document that we've, we've used when we've completed our most recent long-range facility planning, and that's the current enrollment as compared to capacity of each one of our schools. And the, the charge of, of this work group is really multifold, but ultimately it's to come with you, with takeaways, with recommendations, with information that would be helpful for you as you move forward with things like attendance boundary adjustments or facility planning efforts in the near and the distant future. You've had these documents, you've received them, or the previous board has received You've had these documents, you've received them, or the previous board has received them. And with that said, I think it'll be great to have a group of eight or nine people really dig deep into it and, and create some discussion and some recommendations for you. So first meeting is this Thursday afternoon, and I anticipate a second one sometime after this turn of the, of the year.
Okay.
So more account?
Yeah, sounds good. Yeah, with all the new construction, it, I, I still see it and I go, "My gosh, where are we going to put the kids?" But the birth rates are down, so.
Yeah, and we're hearing things out there too, like, "Oh, my gosh, the, you know, schools are overflowing with kids" and things of that sort. And so I think it's important that we help clarify information like that because in some cases, we, well, in most cases, we, we still have, we still have room in, in our schools. But will we have room three or five years from now? I don't know. Hopefully this work group will help sort that out.
Sure, very good. All right, thanks, Andy. Okay, next up, Financial Report with Steve Nielsen.
Good evening. So you received the packet for the month of November, and I decided this month we would, we'd focus more detailed attention on revenue because November's are by far our biggest revenue collection month. Almost a quarter of our budgeted general fund revenue is received in the month of November. Of course, we have our regular state school fund payment, but the reason November is so much different is because of the property taxes. So you'll see that we received over six million dollars in property taxes this month, most of those being current year tax, tax turnover because of the, the tax bills being due in the middle of November. We do have some folks, obviously, that take, take advantage of the one-third payment option. So we, we get a, we, we get a little bit each month, but we, we get a little, little spike in, in February and May as well. But November is by far the, the largest collection month there. So it's, it's a little hard to see on the yellow paper, but there's some shaded revenue sources there. The first three line items, the taxes, the county school funds, the state school fund, common school fund, state timber and federal forest fees. Those shaded items total up at the bottom there in terms of, of what we've received to date and how it compares to our current ODE projected total formula revenue for the year. Our total formula revenue for the year, which is really just another term for the state school fund formula, is ninety-five percent of our general fund revenue. So if you turn to the second page in your packet, one thing that I've added for this month, and I will add this anytime ODE updates their revenue estimate, which on average is about once every two or three months over the course of the school year. We probably won't see another one for seventeen eighteen until about the beginning of March is, which is also when they need to put their first update out by law for the eighteen, nineteen year. So anytime they have an update, all included in the packet. But it also can be found for all one hundred and ninety-seven school districts online on the, on the ODE site by anyone at any time. So anyway, if you take a look at the sheet, we, we do get into this during the budget season, it's in our budget packet, and we talk about it quite a bit, as well as on occasion we'll take some time during a, a work session and dig a little bit deeper as well. So I'll, I'll be relatively brief, but you can see that, that the top left corner of that sheet basically shows you the, our local revenue projections, and those are, those are estimates which don't match exactly what we have in our, our budget necessarily because the estimates are changing. But if you look back at the, at the first page, you can see that the, the revenue source codes, which are directed by the Department of Education, the Chart of Accounts Committee, anything that begins with the number one is a local revenue. Anything that begins with the number two is an intermediate revenue, which is county school funds and, and money directly from the Willamette ESD. Anything that begins with a three is a state revenue source, and anything that begins with a four is a federal revenue source. So as the sheet flows through, basically you could see there's a projection of local revenues, and there's also some adjustments in there for, they, they, they calculate a transportation reimbursement rate. We get reimbursed about thirty percent of our transportation costs, and that's added in there. And they come up with a total figure that they're going to provide to us per ADMW, which again is the average daily membership weighted. So we have over thirty-eight hundred students, including the charter schools in our, in our district. And then there's weighted instrument, weighted measures that you can, we'll, we'll, we'll look at in a second on the, on the next pages for our enrollment in terms of ES, you know, ESL, children that are ESL, poverty adjustments, IEP students, et cetera. And they, they basically then fund, if you look in the middle there, our extended ADMW, they're funding us on four, four thousand four hundred ninety-one ADMW times a rate, the formula revenue rate of eight thousand and thirty-one dollars. If you look over to the left towards the bottom there, that means our projected total formula revenue is thirty-six, a little over thirty-six million dollars. Our local revenue sources, including the property taxes, common school fund, timber, et cetera, is a little over seven million. So the state would then fund us from the general fund, state school fund, twenty-eight million, six hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, which that's what matches the thirty-one oh one there. They divide it into twelve payments. We get a double payment in July, and then a monthly payment August through May and no payment in, in June. So, so it's all wrapped into that formula. Things can change based on several different factors, enrollment by district, also enrollment and weighting factors in other districts can either decrease or increase the amount per ADMW, where we rank in the transportation, as far as our transportation rank in the state, our teacher experience rating. So there's just a lot of things happening there, and that's why they put out updates every, every few months. Obviously, if the economy were to go bad and they had to take away some of the adopted budget, budget money from the legislative session, that certainly can and has happened. So there's just several things to be keeping an eye on as we, as we navigate each year and each biennium. So if you just take a quick look at the next page, it just gives a recap of how they determine the ADM, ADMW for our district specifically. And again, this is on the ODE website. One area to note here is that in sixteen seventeen and in fifteen sixteen, they broke the charter school enrollment out separately. And you'll see in seventeen eighteen, they've rolled it back up into the district total. So it makes it a little confusing to look at for this year. But essentially, the, the funds from the state for all of our schools, as well as the charter schools, still come through Silver Falls School District as revenue, and then we pay each month to the charter schools for their enrollment, and that's part of our expenditures. So anyway, so that's, that's revenue. Again, twenty-five percent of our revenue we received in November, so we're at a high watermark right now as far as cash flow and that type of thing. So the other thing that I've included in this report, we'll, we'll, we'll drill down a little more on expenditures next month, but so, so far year to date, we're, we're on track with our, with our budget. But on the last sheet, I included a sheet that we put in the budget notebook. That's good to look at every once in a while, and it's just a summary, one-page summary of our, all of our funds and some definition as to what, what, what we use them for, what they can be used for. And, and I think that's always helpful to take a look at too. So that's about it for, for this report.
All right.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the more detailed information. I think it'll help with explaining things to people, and they can look at this too. So thank you very much.
You bet.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, good for Steve. Okay, next up is Mark Hannan to talk about Silvercrest School and District Services.
Good rathers. Good evening, folks. I'll start tonight with the district responsibilities or some of my district responsibilities. And I know you received my report earlier, so it's verbatim what, what Mrs. Valoff sent you. So if you have questions at the end, I'd be happy to answer those. So I'll begin with 504 students. There's currently one hundred and sixteen students district-wide on 504 plans. This indicates those students with a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activity. This could be walking, seeing, hearing, concentrating, or even interacting with others, just to name a few. That number continues to grow as we better identify students, and the state continues to add automatic 504 identifications. A couple of those, examples of those would be an insulin-dependent student or an epileptic student. On to nursing services. We currently employ three nurses contracting through Legacy Silverton Medical, Silverton Hospital. A big thank you to Suella Nida, Geraldine Sheets, and Roxanne Ellingboe for all of the work they do providing medical services for our students. This includes everything from injuries on the playground, managing student health protocols, hearing and vision screenings, and of course, the emergencies that unfortunately occur throughout our schools. And also, I'd like to thank Carrie Jack at Legacy Silverton Medical for our unique relationship as most districts contract through their local ESDs. We're one of just a few that, that actually contract through their local hospital. ELL services. We currently have one hundred and sixty-eight ELL students throughout the district. I reported you in August as required by the state, but would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our ELL instructors again. I especially want to thank Kristen Jank as a portion of her FTE is dedicated to reporting and compliance within the ELL program. Last spring, the entire group of teachers, one ELL assistant, myself, attended a conference in Eugene. That was positively received by the group, and we are currently signed up to attend it again this spring. Migrant services. We currently have eighty-three migrant students district-wide. I want to take this opportunity to recognize Monica Hansen for all of the hard work she's done with our high school migrant students. Monica will be retiring at the end of this year, and she will leave some very large shoes to fill, in fact, unfillable large shoes. Monica has been an amazing resource for our migrant population over the years, and if those students attended Silverton High School through their senior year, she graduated every one of them. We again held migrant summer school this past summer at Silverton High School. This is done by partner, partnering with the Willamette ESD, and we're working on trying to expand this opportunity into our second language learner population possibly this summer. Homeless services. As I mentioned in our, your, your last work session, I told you I'd have current numbers for our homeless population. We currently have sixty-five students district-wide. That's up a little bit from the number I gave you at the work session. And this means that those students are receiving services for being homeless. I would like to thank Abby Hayes, the Silvercrest Secretary, and my right and left hand, as a portion of her FTE is dedicated to tracking and providing transportation to our homeless students. And one thing that was asked at the work session that I did want to highlight also, this, our foster population is not included as homeless per se, but many of the services they receive are identical to our homeless student services, including transportation to their school of origin. That's new legislation. Okay, on to Silvercrest. We currently have one hundred and forty-four Silvercrest students, which is up thirteen students from last year. And in a school of our size, thirteen students is a, is a big chunk. Fifty-eight of those students come from outside the Silvercrest boundary, which equates to forty percent of our overall population. We recently held our fall conferences with ninety-eight percent of our families attending. As some of you may recall, we openly advertised what Silvercrest has to offer families looking for a rural K-8 experience, and it apparently is working. Our challenge, however, remains distance from town and trying to maintain a student population that allows our school to prosper. It's an ongoing issue, and we're always trying to see how we can expand and grow to, to maintain programs. This year is my second year at Silvercrest, and I took last year to observe what worked well and where we can improve and grow. I was concerned by the number of blended classrooms and wanted to, wanted to try and reduce that number. I wanted to emphasize the sciences, especially in middle school grades. I wanted to create a middle school feel by introducing advisory groups to help our students transition to Silverton High School. I wanted to make the seventh and eighth grade classes independent, non-blended classes. I wanted to give our students the best opportunity to pass the S-BAC by assigning our middle school teachers subjects they were not only highly qualified to teach, but passionate about as well. So this year, Dan Feller was assigned to teach a five-six blend, seventh and eighth grade science and social studies. Susan Sears was assigned to teach the five-six blend, seventh and eighth grade language arts. Sean Poole was assigned to teach by, the five-six blend, seventh and eighth grade math and PE. I reduced our blends by one classroom. Our seventh and eighth grades are independent classes. We have a separate science classroom adjoined to Mr. Feller's classroom with lab tables showing up this week, thank you anonymous donor, and science equipment. I have a licensed PE teacher that addresses recent legislation, not in effect yet, but once it does go into effect, Sean Poole is a licensed PE teacher. And our teachers are enthusiastically teaching subjects they love. It's my hope that our S-BAC scores will improve accordingly. Finally, I would like to invite each of you to attend our winter concert coming up this Thursday, December fourteenth at six-thirty in our gym. Questions?
I had a question about the services for students in foster care.
Yep.
That, you said that it was similar to homeless students, but I'm assuming it's a different funding source?
Oh, that's a really good question. That, it's an unfunded mandate, basically.
And so that's new legislation?
Pardon?
That's new legislation.
Yeah, yeah. With respect to transportation to the school of origin, that's, that's new. Basically, we've been directed by ODE just to, to address students in foster care. And when I say students in foster care, students in foster care placed by DHS. Students in foster care placed by DHS to address those students under the same guidelines as we address our homeless students.
No worries. Saying that the, the number of foster kids, that's excluded in the homeless tally?
No.
No? Okay.
Mark, of the thirteen new students you got this year, are those transfers or move-ins or?
Most of them.
Most transfers?
Yeah, most of them are, are from outside our.
Yeah.
Boundary.
Okay.
And growing. I met with the family today, as a matter of fact.
Oh, good.
So how far away are you from your target? I know that you had a goal.
Well, that depends on who you ask. If you ask me what the goal is, or if you ask my teachers what the goal is. My, my, my long-term goal would be single graded classrooms. The drawback to that is I've now utilized one of the classrooms to create that middle school science lab. So I'm a little less excited about giving up that classroom now because I really think it's providing a space that many of the rural K-8s have difficulty providing.
I have a question about the 504 students.
Sure.
There is a state mandate now that they're screening for dyslexia. Is that a part of the, is that going to rise for you as far as 504s? What, can you explain that to?
I anticipate that number to go up.
Okay.
Yeah. We haven't, the, the state's still working through that legislation, and OSBA is still working through it, and, and districts are, are still working through it because it is another unfunded mandate.
It is.
So, so to answer your question, I do anticipate 504 students, that population going up.
Yeah, okay. And have you, so you haven't start, have you started screening for those?
We haven't started screening, but we do have some students that it's listed in their 504 currently that.
Oh, in the one hundred and sixteen students?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so that's, okay, so it's still there, but it.
It just wasn't official.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Okay. Anyone request this from Mark?
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Greg Cotts from Mark Twain.
Good evening, everybody. So you, you received a printed out portion of the presentation from Mark Twain Elementary School. So our enrollment this year has gone up, three hundred and forty-five students currently. Kindergarten has one hundred and twenty-five students. After the first couple of weeks of school, we were in a position that our kindergarten numbers were simply too high, and so we received some, some late funding to hire another kindergarten teacher and added a kindergarten classroom. So we now have six kindergarten classrooms, one hundred first grade students and one hundred and twenty second grade students. Our attendance rate through December sixth was ninety-four point seven seven percent, so we're, we're hugging that ninety-five percent. Actually, this time leading up to winter break has, has hit us just a little bit, a few kids with sniffles and, and a few kids on some, on some trips, some early trips and things like that. So hopefully, we can hit that ninety-five percent and, and try to stay a little bit above that. We reported for our perfect attendance, one of the We reported for our perfect attendance, one of the district goals obviously, for first month of school perfect attendance. We had sixty-five percent of our students have perfect attendance the first month of school. Couple of district assessment highlights. First grade math, so November star math window reflected that eighty-eight percent of our first graders were at or above grade level with only eleven students currently performing below grade level. And actually of those eleven students, there are three tiers that we talk about in terms of interventions. So the, and they're based on percentile, so the very lowest tier is our red group and they are our urgent intervention students. And then we have a yellow group that's above them and then we have a group that's on watch that's coded blue. So we actually, of those eleven students below grade level, we didn't have any students that were in the urgent intervention. So that was a real plus for our math at the first grade level. Second grade reading, at this time in the school year last year, the second grader showed forty-seven percent at or above grade level. Grade level is a moving target throughout the school year, obviously. So this is kind of a time where, you know, students are figuring concepts out. They may be taking a test on portions of their curriculum that they haven't received yet. And so over the course of the school year, the grade level performance rises. But at this time last year, they're forty-seven percent at or above grade level with twenty-nine students identified as needing urgent intervention. So that is twenty-nine in that red, that very lowest category. This year, the second graders are at sixty-one percent at or above grade level, it's only eighteen students in that urgent red intervention zone. So that's a marked increase from last year. And then our kindergarten, early literacy, which is their district assessment that they take. At this time last year, sixty percent of kinders were at or above grade level and currently our kinders are posting to seventy-four percent at or above grade level. So just a few highlights based on kind of information that we track fundamentally for our students. A couple of challenges, the very first one, and have had a number of ongoing conversations, some great conversations with district office as well as with facilities. But our campus and the limited fencing has, you know, caused some, a few concerns here and there with animals or people kind of wandering on campus. Sometimes I may get called down or additional staff might be called down to a recess just to kind of keep an eye on the situation. Anytime we have anything that draws concern, we have readily available our SRO that usually can get there within a few minutes. And it might be a couple cars congregating on Mill Street. It could be some people passing by that we just have questions about and we, and we kind of have them on our radar and so we get some help whenever we need it and that's been really, really great. I think a couple of things that have come up this year on the playground is just a few more kids that they're just super excited and they just want to run. So without having fencing, it's a little hard for our staff to chase them down. So some of those little kids are a little quicker than some of our staff members. So they get up in the trees and they can get up to church pretty quick. And we've had a few situations where we can keep eyes on them, but they're ahead of us. And with that open campus, it's just been causing a few issues that are increasing in number from what we've seen previously, so. And then, and then the second thing is kind of around that kindergarten size. You know, our building configuration is unique in the sense that basically all of our students are under the age of eight. We are limited in terms of some interventions and some supports we can provide. For example, a K-8 building, one support that I talked to a lot of principals about is, you know, they might have a student who's having a tough time or just needs a little bit of support kind of throughout the day or maybe, you know, during lunchtime, they might need a buddy or something. And so they might have a, you know, a kindergartner or a first grader and they have like a lunch buddy or they might have like a recess buddy or a reading buddy. And typically, it's developmentally appropriate for about a fifth grader to assume some leadership responsibilities. And so we don't have any of those students at that age. Our oldest kiddos are seven years old. So all of our supports and resources in terms of modeling and reinforcing appropriate behavior and things like that have to come from adults. And so sometimes, this year is one, our numbers have gone up. Our class size has got a little bit bigger. We had to end up making the move on the kindergarten classroom and really our supports are, that we've added this year. Fortunately, we've got a little bit of assistance from the district office based on some of our needs and some of the behaviors that we're tracking. But, you know, our adults are the ones that we really need to get involved. We have some programs through the middle school, for example, they have a host program where some students will come and they help in classrooms. And sometimes we get a little bit of assistance from them, just having another body in the classroom that's a little bit older. Sometimes we have high school students who have openings in their schedule and they may come during the period. But really the biggest, the biggest help is when we can add adults and have them in a structured, in a structured schedule basically so that, you know, when students, you know, not necessarily misbehave, but when students perform kind of the undesired behavior, we can reteach and remind them of the expectation and try to get them back on track or give them opportunities to reset. At this level, a lot of students are, you know, struggling with some, with some, you know, regulation skills and just kind of self-awareness skills. And so it's really important that we reteach that expectation and reteach that behavior frequently. We may not see the benefit of that, but maybe after they leave our building, like third grade, fourth grade, you know, some of those, they start, they start understanding what they need to do to access their academics. And so we're dealing with a little bit of that right now. I kind of wrote obviously a little blurb in there about regulation and we're seeing a lot of things with our kindergarteners. In fact, I gave you a stat in there that of our behaviors that we track or referrals, I guess for a lack of a better term, seventy percent of them are coming from our kindergarteners. So our first and second grade kinders are doing a great job. They're having a really, really good year. And our kindergartners are just having, having a tough time, just, you know, understanding and comprehending what it actually means to be in school for a full day. Some of the students are, they're just not ready for a full day and so we're really trying to work through that with them, so.
How much of an increase would you say Greg, is that seventy percent compared to like years before?
So last year, last year our first graders were high flyers, which we've actually praised kind of our teachers as well as the students. Last year, the first graders were at sixty percent and then second graders shared kind of that remaining forty percent. So second graders had about twenty percent of the referrals and kindergarteners had about twenty percent of referrals.
Last year?
Yeah, last year. So this year, we're, this year we're really, really heavy in the kindergarteners. And a referral, just to, just to kind of put it in perspective, I mean, a referral, we're tracking behavior. We're trying to get an understanding of what behaviors we're seeing and what frequency, where they are in the school, where they are during the school day, all of those types of things. So it could be pushing in line at recess, it could be, you know, hitting another student or, you know, just getting frustrated. It could be leaving the classroom without permission, it could be, you know, horseplay in the bathrooms, things like that. And then we try to put in place either trainings for staff or we try to make some adjustments to basically take the opportunity to reduce the opportunity for students to kind of act out in some of those areas. So, you know, for example, last year, one of the ones was restrooms. And a lot of that was, we didn't have very many sinks. So we had, you know, six or seven or eight kids with a handful of soap standing in line, expecting them to be patient. And that did work very well. So now we have six sinks, for example, in our main restroom and there's soap dispensers all over. So now we have, you know, one or two kids standing at a sink and we have a lot fewer behaviors that we're seeing. That's, that's just one example, so.
That's interesting. I know a kindergarten teacher in another district and she said she's seeing some of the same things this year, just kids not, not catching on as quick as they normally do to how school works, so.
And we have a couple of things planned, trying to get some additional information. I mean, I constantly talk with my supervisor and try to, you know, ask what are some things we're maybe not considering? What are some things that we need to do? Because obviously, the responsibility falls on us to put the kids in a position to be successful. So we have some site visits planned, Salem Kaiser, and I kind of put that in the report. Salem Kaiser and Portland Public are piloting some programs. They are not special education programs. They are, they are just programs that are, that are more intensive behavior interventions. And we're going to go take a look at that the first week in January. But, I mean, everything from transition kindergarten rooms, so students who are in a kindergarten room, but it might be a smaller number of students with more adult resources in there and the academic pace is not as quick. So a lot of, you know, a lot of routines, a lot of transitions, maybe a little bit more kind of discovery style learning, a little bit more play, things like that. And that's one option. And then there's also other options in terms of, you know, self-regulation and just, there's a number of curriculums that you can teach to help students with self-regulation, self-awareness, all of those types of things. Personal space is another one. We have, we have students, for example, that, you know, every time they come in in the morning, they knock a kid over next to them at their locker. And it's not intentional, it's not malicious in any means, they just, they didn't know they were coming in hot, basically. That's, that's a daily occurrence. So we really, we're going to really take a look at what is out there. We're really going to take a look and try to research what is best practice and what are some things that we can do because we fully expect another classroom of one hundred and twenty-five kindergarteners next year. And, you know, we're going to, we're going to try to request, you know, the resources I feel like that we need for that building because every single one of our students is under the age of eight. And it's, they need adults, they need, they need some modeling, they need some constant supervision. And so we're hoping for that for them.
Puts you guys in a tough spot with the new, you know, new academic requirements now.
Yeah.
Kindergarten is kind of the new first grade.
It is, and academically, I think the kindergarteners have shown that they have, at least on our district assessment, they've shown that they've been performing very well. So it takes a little bit of time and they can, they will definitely shoot up an increase here the next few months. But last year, for example, we finished at about ninety, ninety-one percent at or above grade level based on our district assessment and so we're well on.
You guys did an awesome job. Just complicates it a little bit.
It does.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a, yeah, we have some over here.
Oh, real quick Greg, how many feet of fencing do you think would be your dream? What would it take to secure that?
So, so I think, and we do have some maps and we do have some proposals and we've had some conversations on this so we can definitely share some of that information. But, you know, taking a look at the north end of the building, there is a, there's a soccer field that we would not enclose. We would, we would stay just inside of that soccer field. And then there's an access road that goes to the east, leads up to that upper north parking lot. And we'd meet the school right there. And then at the, we'd use the existing fencing that's there on Mill Street. And then on the south end of the property, basically the edge of the parking lot, we were taking, I was taking a look at that with Lauren Stanley today. But on that edge of the parking lot, just kind of finding the best route. You know, we don't need to infence everything there, but take a look at what the best route is based on the use of the area and coming up and meeting the school kind of at that southwest, southwest corner, kind of by the, by the gym. And then, you know, some, you know, some, I think some one-way kind of security fencing there would be, would be great in terms of like the gates. I know that Butte Creek has some, you know, has some fencing where their, you know, their students are kind of, you know, enclosed there, the ground is secure, so.
Yeah, that seems kind of obvious.
That's something we need to keep in.
Yeah.
I have a question for you real quick. In your, in this report, second grade reading. At this point last year, the second grader showed forty-seven percent at or above grade level.
Correct.
With twenty-nine students identified as needing urgent interventions. This year, sixty-one percent are at above grade level with eighteen students currently needing those. What did you implement or what did you do, just to share?
You know, I think it's a combination of things, obviously, but, you know, the huge variable there is the kids. Who knows, it could have been, it could have been a different group of students. But I think the biggest thing is that, you know, we're constantly working with teachers on, you know, the most effective ways to engage students, trying to, you know, take a look at ways where they can, you know, kind of raise the bar in terms of higher order thinking. I think our teachers do a great job. There's not a down, there's not really downtime in the classroom. So it's, it's pretty fast-paced. You know, a combination of that. And then also when we do have students that we recognize as being below grade level, we have a lot of interventions that we put in place from social emotional interventions to academic interventions with those specific skills that they are missing. So it's all information that we track and our title services do that. We have, we have a number of interventions in the afternoon that do that. And then this year, actually, we're kind of piloting a new schedule where the first portion of the day, about, you know, hour and forty-five minutes to two hours of the first portion of the day when the students arrive is specific to reading with as many resources we have pushed in the classroom. So a combination of push-in services and pull-out services, that could be some of the reason that the scores are better at this point in the school year.
Greg, can I ask you about counseling services? When you're talking about the social and emotional learning, that was a question that came into my head. Do you have a full-time counselor?
We do have a full-time counselor. We have a, four hours a week, we have a behavior specialist that comes in and then everybody's constantly in communication. So we teach, we teach some guidance lessons, but they're typically on as students come onto our radar or come through our, you know, our intervention team and through our care team when we talk about students. We have some smaller groups. For example, our counselor provides a group called Space Camp and it's basically about personal space for students. But a lot of times those programs are kind of on an intervention model. They're when the students come onto, come on the scene a little bit. Yeah, we could definitely do a little bit more of that. Our behavior specialist goes into targeted kindergarten classrooms and does a curriculum with students basically about, you know, self-regulation and social emotional and that's through a puppet curriculum. And so some of those things are really, really good. We could use, we could use a lot more.
So you're really looking for a green zone curriculum to address?
Yeah, zones of regulation is kind of what we're familiar with in terms of our students. We did a little bit of that last year. Some of the students remember it. Some of our students that we would like them to remember that actually remember it, which is great. And you can actually communicate with students using the zones of regulation. So our behavior specialist this year has not worked a lot with that, but is very familiar with that and tries to just find some of the commonalities in some of the, you know, curriculums that she's using in there. So that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Thanks for your specifics on your challenges. That's really helpful.
Other questions?
Yep.
That's great.
Thank you. Okay, board report.
A little bit. Talked to a few people at Gun Shop and stuff that I frequent about the possibility of this formation of the high school clay team. And it sounds like a couple of them, once we find out, you know, if those kids vote approved and might be willing to do some discounts for the kids for, you know, safety, hearing protection, I hear, possibly some shotguns, so.
Yeah, that'd be great, absolutely. I attended the Christmas concert the other, last week and that was fantastic. It was standing room only. It was pretty impressive, first rate. And I really, what struck me is how many kids were participating in that all night long. I mean, I think that was probably one hundred and twenty, one hundred and forty students. And the amount, the amount that I was thinking about that and I was thinking, we have a very high participation rate with sports, clubs, activities at the school. And that just, that was definitely on, on display the other night. It was, it was a great concert. It was a great concert. We came in a little bit late and they were shuttling in chairs, just had to sit along the side, so it was a good time.
My family went to see Bye Bye Birdie and kudos to everybody who makes that possible. Students and their hard work, the parents who pick up from practice and all the staff members who contribute. That was a huge work to put on a musical and it was great.
Anybody else? Okay, next correspondence. We received three letters, correspondence from, shoot. Read the names from John Lithwait, Sarah Reeve, if I got that name right, and Christine Eubanks. And they were all in support of maintaining current policy as far as teaching religion in school. So that will go in the record. And we didn't receive anything else, so our next item is action items. And, oh, okay, good, I didn't see that on there. We need to have a second audience with visitors. It's not on here. That's, I think I mixed them up. Okay, and this is only referring to current action items.
Correct.
Okay, good.
First, I want to say thank you to the district for how quickly. Yeah, I signed in the back.
Yeah, I signed in the back. Michelle Fennecle, 817 Liberty Street. I want to say thank you to the district for how quickly they put up the policies after public comment. As a community member, I just appreciate that. Second of all, I can ask you questions, correct? And you guys can answer?
We can choose to answer.
You can choose the answer. Okay, great. I just want to clarify because there's not always a lot of back and forth discussion between these two roles, so I wanted to clarify.
If I can, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, please, please. In the public comment section, it actually discourages open communication with the board like this, that if there are specific questions that are to be asked, that they either go through administration or they be asked of the board and then they can defer to administration or possibly get back to you at a later time. I just need to be real clear about that because I think there's sometimes the public does want to come up and just have a conversation with the board.
Yeah, that's not right.
And it's just a good reminder of what your role is at this point.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Also, maybe to point out the process that you can ask to be, to give the superintendent notice that you're going to be here and he can potentially come up with, you know, answers to questions ahead of time so that the answers can come during the meeting instead of later. Because I know that we have had some questions that have been answered by administrative, administration at a later date because they weren't aware of the person who was, you know, had questions in that area.
Perfect. Well, these questions, and I'll reframe them then, was in regards to what Ms. Holstead had said this evening. I listened to her carefully, especially in regards to the religious policy. I see that there are no changes to the laws since both policies reference ORS 332.107 and 336.1035, which Mr. Belando had indicated. It seems to me that the new policy is not a result in a change of federal or state law, correct? There was no personal case of law that brought about the new policy, correct? And this is not a time-sensitive matter, correct? Those were all the indicators that she had said makes for an important must-do sort of policy change. Since none of those apply, I would urge you, and there wasn't a lot of discussion tonight, and do you vote next week on this or not, a next board meeting on this policy?
No, you're actually not required to take any action at all. Inaction means the policy remains in place.
Okay. I would just urge you all to have a nice, open discussion about it. I appreciated both Jennifer Trager and Tom Bushhoff and, sorry if I messed up your name, and Shelley Nealon giving your stance, but for the other four of you, we don't know where you stand. I want to make a case that although this may be ordinary for some districts, Silverton's not an ordinary district, as is true of when they had redistricting and restructuring of districts. And our district chose as parents and community members to be different, to have a voice in how our district would be sliced up or not sliced up. And I would just encourage you as a board member to keep that at heart and remember that it is your parents and your community members that have invested a lot in this school district and to really listen to those constituents and what they're saying about this policy. I feel like the original current policy does reflect the hearts and the minds of Silvertonians and as case, it's original. Nobody else has it, just like Silverton. And I just urge you to keep that, so, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Sarah Watson. Is it, are they working tonight? I was going to say before my three minutes start that I had to sit in the back tonight and I can't hear very well back there, so I just encourage you all to really eat the mic, you know, all of you, so that people at home can hear also. Anyways, I just had a couple of comments regarding Section I in the policy. First of all, I also agree with the others that have stated that I think the religion policy should stay the same. But actually, after reviewing the information that Debbie sent, thank you, had some questions regarding IGAI and, which is the Human Sexuality, AIDS, HIV, Sexually Transmitted Diseases Health Education. Sorry, I'm talking quickly, I want to make sure I cover everything. I noticed that in the deleted policy, it took out information on teaching female, male and reproductive systems, pregnancy stages and childbirth, and it was not included in the newer policy. And as a healthcare provider, that just kind of struck me as odd. And also, it was nice to hear Peggy's explanation about all of this and I'm sure that their OSBA is in touch with the Oregon Health Department, all that sort of stuff. But as a current healthcare person, registered nurse, when I read things like AIDS/HIV, I think, gosh, that's really outdated. We don't use that terminology that much anymore and STDs, we say STIs. So I just thought that, more importantly, it struck me that the science aspect was taken out of the actual teaching of male and female reproductiveity. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention. And that, I think that got it. The other thing that I noticed when I was skimming, I obviously could not get through all 500 pages of that or whatever, how many it is in one month. But to me, listening to Peggy and then thinking about what I reviewed, there seems to be a lot of inconsistencies in some language and punctuation. And I read a lot of policy because as a nurse, you have to read all the policies and get in trouble if you don't read the policies, right? So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and state that I really hope that all seven of you have actually read all of your entire pocket and policies of Section I before you adopted. Because also, my last comment is that I did compare some of these policy changes to different districts and one that stuck out was like Carvalis because they seem fairly similar in size to us. But for instance, why do we have to have a parental waiver for a PG-13 movie in high school when they're all 13 versus, you know, in Carvalis, if you're, you don't have to have a waiver for PG-13? Just a little inconsistency like that that I came across in my review and I know you guys have a lot of work and I thank you for your time and thank you for all of the work that you're doing to better our district.
If I can, real quick. I know some of the policies like Paige talked about, some things are covered in others. So I would almost bet that the part about the human sexuality and HIV/AIDS policy is probably covered in other policies like human sexuality.
In Section I, though? Because I thought, isn't Section I all of the instructional? I don't know, I didn't see it, but then again, I.
Something that's specific, excuse me, Tom, something that's specific is covered in state standards of curriculum.
Okay.
So my sense is that's why it's probably been pulled from policy.
Pulled from policy.
Because policy should determine specific state standards, the state of Oregon, which is also.
But the language in IGAI is pretty specific, though. I mean, regarding even words like abstinence and, you know, needle use, which is important in my opinion, all of that language for the health of our kids. So I just thought, noticed that it was odd, in my opinion, to have something that blatantly deleted, but then, I don't know. Anyways, I thought, after Peggy thought, I thought, well, I'll just email you and ask what the Oregon Health Department says about the new language if on HIV, STI, STD, whatever. But ultimately, what my major goal is that I really hope as my elected officials that you've looked through me and read every single sentence. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, anybody else? Okay, very good. Okay, now we can move on to action items. Let's see, so the, is to approve the formation of a state high school clay target association team for sorority high school. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just for the record, I think this is a fabulous idea. And thank you to Kevin Palmer and James Rice for all their work on this and for listening to the kids and getting the ball rolling on this because I think it's going to be a great thing for a lot of kids. So thank you, Alex.
Yeah, we had a good discussion at the work session about it and they were, the, their policies and procedures about safety, 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 safety. No guns, you know, there'll never be a gun at school, never in the parking lot. And, you know, so safety was everything. And the way they were seen to be capturing a few more kids that weren't involved in any other activities at school. I think they were, I think 10 or 15 of these kids who were interested aren't involved in any other activities. So it's another way to capture those kids and make them be part of the community. So I think it's, I'm very supportive of this.
And thanks to the community members, Jamie, I think you're one of who was at the last work session and shared a lot of information about their experiences with this league in a different district, so, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, very good. So you've had a motion and a second and some discussions, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, very good. Now we'll adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, clarification for my benefit. How would you like me to handle Policy IGAC? Because if there's interest by the majority of the board in not doing anything with the revisions that were suggested by OSBA, then we'll leave that alone. We can bring it up at a future meeting if you like, but if it's existing policy, it's existing policy and it won't change if you do nothing about it.
I say leave it alone, but I don't know, I guess we can, is everyone nodding, everyone agreeing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Remain the same.
Okay.
Leave it alone.
All right, that's the way it'll be.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Okay, very good. Okay, so let's adjourn to executive session under ORS 192.6602H to consult with counsel concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Thank you for attending.